In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046, PL 1975, C231 S1, amended 2006, C70 S2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press Amendment Poster on January 3rd, 2020 by email. Topics of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Bulletin, Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 3rd, 2020. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses the skills and character to succeed in a diversity-evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Etienne? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Jones? Ms. Lattaraca? Here. Ms. Lozinski?
Here.
Mr. Pinkney? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Breach?
Here.
Ms. Sanders?
Here. Will you please stand for the flag salute? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now, we have presentations this evening. I know on your agenda, you have Mrs. Gray that will present first, but we switched, and so I will be presenting to you, board members, and I'm asking you to refer to A13, which is the 2021 board goals. If you have that document in front of you, I will read the first one. Continue. Goal one is to continue to refine and implement ways to communicate our story to the Asbury Park community. Goal two, develop communication protocols to improve communication between members of the Board of Education. Goal three, schedule quarterly updates to the full board on the development of the budget and the fiscal implication. And goal four, develop and implement a plan for continuous board professional development in order to achieve board certification. Now, we met with our New Jersey School Boards representative in August, and these were the goals that we as a board decided on. I did send an email to the full board asking you which one you would like to be, to participate in, and I do need full board participation. So, and no one responded, except I believe Mr. Lattaraca. So, at this time, I would like for you, you know, pick a goal so that we can set up a committee and get this taken care of by October.
Madam President?
Yes?
I'll volunteer for the community and parental engagement.
Community and parental engagement?
Yep.
Okay, that's goal one number, so we all know.
That's goal number two.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to work with Mr. Grillo?
I will.
Okay. I didn't see parental. It's the district. That's protocols. I don't see this. You're looking at the wrong thing. This is ours, right?
Oh, I'm sorry.
A13. Yeah, number two is what I was.
Oh, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, it's communication protocols to improve communication between members. I pronounced that wrong.
That's perfect.
Okay, so you're still interested in that one?
Absolutely. Communication protocols, absolutely.
Okay.
I'll join, Madam President, Ms. Barbara Lozinski. I'll join Joe on number two.
Okay, so I have four members. I have Joe, Mrs. Jones, Ms. Etienne, and Ms. Lozinski. Anyone for goal one? Thank you very much. I'll work on goal four. This is the board president.
I'll work on goal one with anybody.
She was supposed to give that because I'm going to call her. Yeah, she put that on hold. Okay, so I'll ask, I'll call her. What about goal three? Don't be shy.
Yeah, I think I'm on goal three.
Dom?
Yeah, I'm on goal three.
Okay.
I'll do goal one. I couldn't get my mic on.
Oh, okay. She wants one. So you and Barb?
Yeah.
I'll join Dominic on four.
Okay, thank you. Dominic's on three.
That's what I mean. I'm sorry, goal three. And since you have enough on two, I'll move myself from two, since you have four. And I'll make it three, okay?
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Lastly, I did speak with board members regarding a mental health committee, and I had some members that were interested, and that's Ms. Etienne, Mrs. Jones, and Mr. Grillo. Okay? And Ms. Etienne volunteered, I heard from her first, and she volunteered to be the chair of that committee. So, Ms. Etienne, if you would set up a scheduled meeting however it needs to be done, would appreciate it. Barb, you asked first for goal one. Will you be the chair for goal one?
Certainly.
Thank you. Joe, goal two, chair?
Sounds good to me.
Dom, goal three?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now you know. So now you can set up your committee. I need you to report back. I'll give you, or you can reach out to Mr. Hastings, and he will give you the outline. Yeah, he'll give you the action plan. Thank you. And have all of this completed by October's board meeting. Okay? Thank you all. Madam Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I will be reporting out on four district goals. Our first goal is academic excellence. We have continued with the headings that we have established for our goals. Some of the content has been updated and revised to reflect the current circumstances and situation we find ourselves in during this global pandemic. So, our first goal is academic excellence. By June 2021, all students in grades pre-K to 12 will develop and maintain a 21st century digital portfolio of writing assignments. This portfolio will be maintained by the district and contain historical data that will be available to all instructional staff. Second goal is community and parents engagement. By the end of school year 2020 to 2021, we will increase parental involvement and school interaction by 50%. Our third goal is innovative practices. By the end of 20, by the end of June 2021, all teachers district-wide will utilize a learning management system to create dynamic, interactive academic spaces that provide personalized instruction for all 21st century learners. And our last district goal is collaborative community and fiscal accountability. We will develop a plan to repurpose Obama Elementary School and the steps necessary to accomplish. That completes my reporting out on our four district goals. I'm delighted to have had very strategic planning sessions, very purposeful strategic planning sessions with members of the executive committee who were extremely responsive and thoughtful as we thought about the current state that we're in, our new reality, and how we're going to continue to support our students. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any questions? Ms. Lozinski?
The question I had is on number two, interaction by increasing by 50%. What percentage base do we have now that you're going to start with? I'm not sure, you know, like what percentage do we have now? And then what will be 50% of them?
So, the next part in our action planning, we'll give you those metrics for our baseline, and then we'll share with you in the next phase incrementally how we're looking to increase that. So, that will be a part of our action planning and next steps.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to follow up with, last year's was parental engagement too, and we did have a report, so I thought maybe we'd have like some kind of general baseline that we have.
Right, we're creating that baseline. We are creating the baseline data for our parental participation from our report and our involvement last year.
Any other questions? Okay. Madam Superintendent, you have any other?
Yes, I'm going to move on now to Dr. Kristi Howard Morris, who will present for us our student safety data system, our SSDS. Dr. Howard Morris?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, good evening.
Okay, so I'm not sure if you will have what I have. Do you have to share that?
Yeah, one second.
Yeah, we didn't get a copy of it, although I did request it on Monday or Tuesday.
I didn't get that request. There it is. Okay. This is the period from January to June 2020. Okay, so. If you take a look at the district report, so period two, like I said, is a period from 2019, January 2019 to June 2020. So, if you look at the Asbury Park High School, there were seven incidents. So, let me describe them again in case you forgot. So, incidents is anything that falls under the category of violence and vandalism. So, there's a fights, assault, vandalism, anything like that. Anytime you see other, those are any other suspensions, whether that be in-school or out-of-school suspension, any other incident that resulted in a suspension. The incidents or the suspensions just pertaining to violence and vandalism. So, as you could see, in 2019, excuse me, January to June, we had seven incidents at the high school. For incidents, we had 10 MLK. We had none at Barack Obama. We had none at Bradley Elementary, and we had one at Thurgood Marshall. Now, for other, we had six at the high school, 10 at MLK, one at Barack Obama, one at Bradley, two at Thurgood, and we had no hibs. Now, from the period two in comparison, so from 2018 to 2019, period two, we had seven incidents. We had, at the high school, we had 22 incidents at MLK. We had one incident at Barack Obama, one incident at Bradley, and two incidents at Thurgood.
I'm sorry, Dr. Howard. See the next slide? Oh, there it is. Never mind.
We have 52 other at the high school, 15 at MLK, none at Barack Obama, seven at Bradley, and four at Thurgood Marshall. And then as far as hibs from the, from last year, we had zero hibs at the high school, four at MLK, two at Barack Obama, one at Bradley, and one at Thurgood Marshall. So, if you look at the comparison between at the high school from period two, from 2018, 2019, to 2019, 2020, they were the same with regard to incidents. For other, it went down significantly. And remember, other is anything, any other suspensions resulted in suspension besides violence and vandalism. So, all the other incidents went down significantly by 46. And then hibs were both zero for 2018, 2019, and 2019, 2020. At the middle school, a comparison between last year and this year, there were 22 incidents in 2018, 2019, and there were only 10 in 2019, 2020, which went down by 12. Other, there were 15 in 2018, 2019, and 10 in 2019, 2020, which went down by five. And then there were four hibs in 2018, 2019, and none in 2019, 2020, which was a difference of minus four. At Bradley Elementary, there was one in 2018, one incident in 2018, 2019, and there was zero in 2019, 2020. Other category, there were seven in 2018, 2019, and one in 2019, 2020. There was one hib in 2018, 2019, and there were none in 2019, 2020. At Barack Obama, we had one incident in 2018, 2019, and none in 2019, 2020. Other category, there was zero in 2018, 2019, and there was one in 2019, 2020. There were two hibs in 2018, 19, and there was zero in 2019, 20. Thurgood Marshall, there were two incidents in 2018, 2019, and one in 2019, 2020. The other category, there were four in 2018, 2019, and there were two in 2019, 2020. There was one hib in 2018, 19, and there were none in 2019, 20. And so here's the three-year comparison of the district totals. So, as you see in 2017, 18, there were 41 incidents. There were 33 incidents in 18, 19, and then there were 54 incidents in 19, 20. And other category, there were 122 in 2017, 18, 78 in 2018, 19, and 52 in 2019, 20. There were seven hibs in 2017, 18, eight in 2018, 19, and three in 2019, 20. So, what I did was, just to, you know, make it the comparison in real time, I actually did a comparison from January to March, because if you look at the comparison from this year, it wouldn't be real if you didn't cap it off in March. So, what I did was, I did 2018, 2017, 18, there were 18 incidents from January to March. And in 2018, 2019, there were 24 incidents. And then 2019, 2020, there were 18. So, it's kind of, it went down from 2018, 2019. And on the category of other, from January to March, in 2017, 18, there were 30. And in 2018, 19, there were 65. And in 2019, 2020, there were 20. There were two hibs in 2017, 18, three in 2018, 19, and there were none in 2019, 20. And then I also add the suspensions for the total suspensions from January to March. There were, you know, you could see there, the first, in January, we had two at the high school, three at the middle school, one at Bradley Elementary, Barack Obama, and Thurgood Marshall. And in February, we had six at the high school, 11 at the middle school, and none at the elementary schools. In March, we had one at the high school, five at the middle school, none at Bradley and Barack Obama, and two at Thurgood. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Have any questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Lozinski?
I'll let Ms. Breach go first. She raised her hand first.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just, Dr. Howard, just curious. I'm seeing the big decline in the middle school. Do we have any type of action plans to maybe go with that? What would you do with that?
Well, I think that they're addressed by changing the dynamic of the middle school. And I was just talking to someone today, I think by putting the seventh, eighth grade up with the high school kids, having a sixth grade over the middle school, I think that dynamic is going to make a big difference with regard to discipline.
I guess we're going to have to wait and see when we get back in school, that's for sure.
Yeah, yes.
Is that it for you, Ms., Madam Vice President? Yeah, okay, then Ms. Lozinski?
I commend Dr. Howard on doing a comparison, because as soon as we get into virtual learning... Mr. Hastings, can you turn your mic off? Thank you. Virtual learning, yeah, it really does make a difference because they're not all together in the schools, and that does reduce the incidences that could occur. And I'm sure statewide, there's going to be a substantial decrease in a lot of this. So, thank you for doing that.
You're welcome.
Okay. That's it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Albert Morris.
Thank you.
Ms. Lattaraca, last question, I think.
Okay. One more question?
Yes.
Could someone just comment, kind of a follow-up to Barb? Our social emotional learning with us currently online, are some things going on? What are those things? And just a little information on that, so that we're not...
Yes.
Clearly, the numbers, when you don't have groups of kids, are going to be better, but we don't want to fall behind. So, what's going on right now? Thanks.
So, what we did was, we formed a SEL subcommittee as part of the plan back to school. And what we're doing is, the subcommittee is actually putting together activities for teachers to utilize in their virtual classrooms. So, we created a calendar with not only verbal or written exercises, but also some exercises for students to actually get up and move around. So, from the first day up until the end of the day, the end of the month, the last day of the month, there are activities that are planned. And we planned them that were grade-oriented. So, we have some for pre-K to three. We have some for four to six, and we also have some exercises from seven to 12. Now, next month, we also are putting together a calendar for teachers to utilize in their virtual classrooms. So, and we're still also, our SACS, our social workers and our counselors are still doing groups with students. They're still meeting with students in groups, and they're also meeting with them individually as well.
Madam Superintendent, do you have anything further to add, or shall we move on?
We have one more presentation. And we also, to your question, Mr. Lattaraca, every day is embedded in our daily schedule. Our students begin with mindful morning. As a part of our SEL initiative, we actually have had some of our parents participating in the mindfulness meditation and yoga as a part of their child's daily activity and schedule. Our next presentation?
I'm sorry, I just have one other question for Dr. Howard. I don't know if she's still there. Hi, Dr. Howard. I'm sorry, Dr. Howard Morris. You know what? I just wanted to, just wanted to see, just get a bit of a review of how the data is collected for each of the different categories. Like, the incident happens all the way to when you've got it in a report. You're on mute. Sorry.
So, if there's an incident that occurs, the administrator, of course, has to do a report, and it's put in Genesis. So, Genesis is tied to our state report. So, once it's in there, we can't, we can't take it out. So, we put together a report based on the category. If it's something that is categorized under violence and vandalism and assault, a fight, they give a strict categories based on what the incident is. Once it's put into Genesis, we have to create a report, and that's how we come up with our data. So, any in-school suspension, so the other category is also inclusive of in-school suspension and out-of-school suspensions. So, like, and as you could see, so if you recall, when we did our code of conduct, one thing that we did was, we took away of suspensions when we created our alternative learning lab. So, when a kid curses a teacher out, we're not sending them home for three days anymore. Because, you know, studies, you know, show that that's not doing the kid any good, and that's not helping us as well. So, those situations where a child has a meltdown, we have a place for them to reset themselves and come back. So, we're not suspending kids for that anymore.
Thank you.
Two questions. We see kids who are having difficulty.
Talk a lot.
Okay. We have a psychiatrist on board, and we're paying him. Are we utilizing him even though the kids are not in school for kids who are really having emotional problems?
Most definitely. Like I said, they're doing a lot of teletherapy is what they call it. With the student, if they're having issues.
In addition, we have licensed clinicians that are also providing teletherapy in instances where the families have insurance. They pick that up. Otherwise, the district makes sure that we provide those supports, and those supports have been ongoing.
Okay, are there any other questions?
We have the licensed clinicians tomorrow.
The YMCA.
Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
So, our next report is a requirement to provide the graduation information. I'm very delighted with the way Debbie Sylvia, our school director of school counseling, and her team has this information laid out for you. Please understand that this is a requirement in our code that we have to provide this information, but it's also understood that in providing this information, this is preliminary data, as the state has not certified our rate. So, there is still a process and a window by which we are looking to have additional feedback coming to us from the state once they certify. What we're presenting to you is the minimum in terms of what we know from the state, but we are awaiting further guidance. So, without further ado, Ms. Sylvia, would you please begin your presentation?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. As Mrs. Gray said, I'm going to talk about cohort 2020. So, I just want to clarify the difference between cohort 2020 and the graduating class of 2020. What I'm focusing on tonight is the data that's connected to students that started ninth grade in the year 2016, 2017. So, sometimes we have students that graduate and walk in graduation, but they might not be in that cohort. They could be graduating early, or they could be a fifth-year senior. Okay, so this is for students that started in the 16, 17 school year. That's our 2020 cohort. So, to graduate, you know, you have to earn 120 credits in a specific sequence of courses, and then you also have to show proficiency in English and math. And there's three ways that a student can show proficiency. And the first way would be through our standardized test, the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. And the ones that the state has selected to determine that proficiency is the English for grade 10, that assessment, and the Algebra I assessment. So, that's the first pathway for a student to meet the assessment requirement in order to graduate. If a student does not meet that pathway, the second pathway they can do is demonstrating the proficiency through an alternative assessment. And the state's been very generous in the number of ways that they're allowing students to show this proficiency, understanding that, you know, this isn't a cookie cutter kind of world, and students show proficiency in a lot of different ways. And it's not one test that is, you know, ends all, means all to show that you have acquired that proficiency. So, if you look at the second pathway, you'll see that they use PSAT, SAT, the ACT, other NJSLA exams for ninth grade and 11th grade. They use the AccuPacer. They use the ASVAB. So, there is a lot of opportunity for our students to be able to demonstrate proficiency in that area. So there is a lot of opportunity for our students to be able to demonstrate proficiency in that area and a lot of students do show that, use that pathway. If a student doesn't hit one of the benchmarks in that pathway, there is the alternative pathway and that's the third one. And the proficiency is demonstrated through a portfolio that has to be submitted to the Department of Education. So that would be if they needed it in English or in math, or sometimes a student might need it in both. And we always provide, and I thank the board for the support of this, we always provide an after-school program to support students who haven't hit one of the benchmarks and need that portfolio. So that becomes very critical. In January, the kids usually come in and start working diligently with the teacher on the portfolio. It's a lot involved and there's a lot to do to get it together and it's usually a process that takes them from January through probably mid to end of May. And that would be their third way, we would submit that to the state and if it's approved, that would be their way of showing the proficiency. So those are the three pathways. I showed you a little bit about, you know, the three pathways and this next slide just breaks down the cut scores for those alternative assessments. So that's just for your reference, if you were wondering, well, what do they have to score on the SAT? Okay, so if they need a pathway for English proficiency, they have to have a 450. If they need a proficiency on the SAT for math, it's a 440. Okay, so we have to track all of this data. So we're very, very careful to make sure we look at everything and give our students all the opportunities to test that is possible in order for them to hit one of these benchmarks. In fact, just yesterday, we had the testing for the SAT and we had 70 students that signed up to come in and they did all come in and it went wonderfully. So students, you know, they look forward to doing these assessments, not only for college, but because they realize that they can also use this as one of their graduation benchmarks. We had an executive order from Governor Murphy that was signed on April 7th, excusing students from the requirement to hit one of those benchmarks to demonstrate their proficiency in English and math. And obviously, that was connected to the pandemic and the kids not having the opportunity to be in a class with a teacher, to work on the portfolio if they needed to. So we were very quick when we went into that stage of the initial stages of the pandemic. We actually had our teachers doing the Google Classrooms with the kids that needed the work. We were funneling things back and forth, hand-delivering things to kids at their house with the attendance officers and stuff. So we were very proactive because we didn't know, you know, we went out in March and we hadn't heard anything. So this was signed on April 7th. So you'll see our data will look a little bit different this year because we don't have students, we don't have many students that actually completed the portfolio process. The next slide is the pathways that our 92 graduates used in order to graduate. So the first pathway, of course, is they can pass the English 10 or the Algebra 1. So we had 11 students that did that in English and six that did that in math. You'll see that a lot of students, the majority of students, do graduate through the second pathway and that's through an alternative assessment that we just spoke about, SAT, ASVAB, AccuPlacer, or any combination of those benchmarks. The gray area is Pathway 3, which is the portfolio. You'll see how low that is and that's just because we didn't actually have portfolio this year. And then, I didn't mention this in the other slide, but we do have students that are able to graduate through specific requirements through their IEP. So sometimes students don't have to hit one of those benchmarks, it goes regarding, you know, back based on their IEP. So we did have 18 students that did graduate through their IEP. And then this last column in blue is the waiver. So there was 30 students that went through on the waiver based on Governor Murphy's allowance for English and there were 33 that did it with math. And I just want to pause a minute and just explain a little bit about this because in looking at our data from the prior years, normally when we're ready to do portfolio, it's usually about 50%. So normally, like if 100 kids graduate, it's usually around 50 that might need a portfolio. So we had 92 students that graduated this year and if you see, if you include who already completed the portfolio, we're down to about 34 in English and about 36 in math. So that may seem like a high number, but if you look at our data from the past, that's actually a lot lower. And I just want to draw attention to that because I know that sometimes, you know, people say that we're not making progress and, you know, Asbury's not doing well. We are making progress and we are seeing it in this kind of data for the way our students are able to graduate, that a lot of them now, not as many of them need the portfolio appeals process. The next slide that I want to talk to you about is our non-graduates. So this is an interesting set of data when we break this down because we had 24 students in this cohort that did not graduate. So that means 24 students that started their freshman year in 16, 17, did not earn a high school diploma in 2020. But I want to break down these numbers a little bit because six of the students, if you look at the area in blue, six of the students are students that are errors or students that should not be in our cohort. So those are students that we are appealing. So as Ms. Gray said, the numbers that the state sets for our graduation, that has not been finalized yet. And the reason it's not finalized is because the appeal process just opened. The window opened in September, mid-September, and we have until November to file appeals. So you won't get an actual number from the state in regards to what our graduation rate is until November, when the appeal process is over. So there are six students currently right now that we're appealing. We always continue to go through the data and look for more. And then the area in green are six other students that are still with us. So although they did not earn their high school diploma, they're still with our school and will hopefully be a fifth-year senior and will be counted as our, you know, in that data when we calculate our fifth-year graduates next year. So some of the reasons kids stay are because through their IEP, they're allowed to be here until they're age 21. And, you know, we have to provide all those supports for them and that's usually our most, you know, cognitively impaired students that need to do that. Sometimes there are students that are in special schools outside of the district and it's really to their benefit to stay because once they hit 21 and they leave, you know, it's not like, there's a lot of opportunity. We try and work with DVR and stuff like that to get them jobs and things, but they're not students that are typically benefiting by graduating in four years. And then the main number I want to talk about is this 10 in the red. So these are our 10 students that are actually on our cohort as dropouts. Now, a dropout is interesting when you look at it because it includes students that were assigned to us as in our cohort that we may not have actually ever had the opportunity to support. And the reason that happens is if a student transfers from another district, we have to register the student right away and they become part of our cohort. Sometimes, what's been happening in the past years and what you'll see happen here this year with these four students, we had four students this year that came from charter or they came from other districts and they never attended more than eight days in our district. They were, they came in their senior year, they came undercredited in their senior year, they came with a lot of issues and then they never came to school. So they weren't actually kids that we had the opportunity, you know, to provide with a lot of the resources that we have through the Power of 10 and mentoring and the counseling and all of the programs that, you know, the board has supported for us. These students didn't have an opportunity to do that. They were not kids that we had from 16 and 17, they just came in 19, 20 and didn't continue. The other data that's interesting is ELL students. So we always support our ELL students and we're required to accept them when they come in to register. And a lot of times, they come in, I say the majority of times at the high school, they come in undercredited. Sometimes they come in not only not speaking the language, but not having much education even in the countries where they're coming from. So sometimes it's a little bit extra to get them caught up and I can't even explain how thrilled I am with the ESL department, the ELL department because to see how the kids come in, speaking no language and very, very quickly by the time they graduate, they're very proficient. It's just amazing to see the transformation. I'm really appreciative of those programs that we have for our ELL students. In this case, this was one student that came in already at age 18, again, undercredited. We knew when he came in that we would have no way of meeting him where he is and being able to get him to graduate, but he did get to learn English. You know, he did get those resources while he was with us for a few years and a lot of times, that's what they're looking for too. They're looking, you know, to learn the English and be with peers and learn the English that way. So he is counted against us just by virtue of he aged out and we couldn't have him in the building anymore because, you know, we're limited to what age groups kids can be in the building. And then we have three students who spent multiple years, nearly all of their years, in out-of-district placements. So again, those would be kids that don't have the benefits of the programs that we have in district. And that's why it's really important that we keep kids in district if at all possible. And I commend, you know, Mr. Bramley and his department for bringing a lot of the kids back, which allows us to work with them. But sometimes kids, depending on their disability and the level of their disability and their needs, aren't able to be in the district. And then we don't have a lot of control in supporting them and making sure they get through to graduation. So that, even though we ended up with 10 students that were actual coded as dropouts, you can see what kind of makes up that number of dropouts. It's not students that we've literally like had and were able to do things with. And then I have two that are unverified, two that are showing up in NJ Smart as unverified as far as they transferred somewhere and we don't know what happened. So we're still investigating that and trying to find, you know, a way to see if those students are our responsibility as far as our cohort data. And if they're not, they will be included in the appeal process that we are filing. So we're still working on those two. So the numbers I'm going to share with you next will be an indication of where we may be in graduation before the appeals, at 79.3%. And then after the appeals, we could go all the way up to 85.1% depending on the number of appeals that are approved. The other thing I want to point out, the final thing I want to point out is when we calculate the graduation rate, every student has a very large impact on that graduation rate. If we were a district where we had hundreds and hundreds of kids in our senior class and one student didn't make it, it wouldn't impact the graduation rate the way it does in our district because our numbers are so small. If we lose one kid, literally our graduation rate could drop an entire percentage for every kid that we lose. So that's just an idea of, you know, some of the difficulties that we've had. You know, when you see what's included in our dropout rates and, you know, the kind of things that we're dealing with and supports we're trying to provide, how critical it is to keep the programs in place that we have because every student matters and every student should have an opportunity to walk across that stage and get the diploma. And again, I commend the board for always supporting all the programs that allow students that opportunity. That's my presentation and if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Lizinski? I think Dominic...
So go ahead, Barb.
I don't have a question, but I want to commend the presentation because I think that pie graph with the explanation of how some of the statistics are skewed because we are assigned students that may not be our responsibility or how they come into our district. And I think that graduation rates are not as understood as that presentation has given us the understanding of how it's determined. And I think, you know, in this community, when you hear about graduation rates, they don't know about all the little things that happen that can affect that. And I think the presentation was very good. I hope that it does show up on our district website because I think that it might be something that people are interested in.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Yes. We're along the same lines. Essentially, if we look at dropouts, I mean, it's astounding and everyone needs to be commended. Of the students we've worked with, we lost two students, if I'm understanding the data correctly.
Over four years, we lost two students.
Yeah, I mean, that's... I mean, to me, that, you know, I regret the two, but that's excellent work. If it's, you know, presented in that fashion, as Barb talks about, you know, there's all the state definitions of who they're including, but that's just excellent work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, I want to just commend Debbie Sylvia and her team. They did an outstanding job in compiling this information. This report, to your point, Ms. Lizinski, it will be on our district website. It will also be shared with you as board members, as will Dr. Howard Morris's report. I'm going to transition now, Madam President, into my presentation. I just have some commentary along with the data dashboard. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge that we have Ms. Sonia Erzary on. She is on providing any kind of translation supports. So if we have any Spanish-speaking parents on the call, she's there. Please input any questions or any comments you need or would like to share in our chat feature as well as Madame Etienne, or Me Etienne is also available for Haitian Creole Translation Services. And they will continue to be with us throughout this portion of our board meeting and we will have translation services available at every board meeting. With regard to my commentary, in preparation for our virtual back-to-school next week, we are having our back-to-school nights, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday of next week. And there has been a PowerPoint presentation created to go over Title 1 to educate our families. That presentation will also be available on our website as well as our district YouTube channel. And all principals will receive the presentation and they'll be playing that back at their back-to-school nights. Also, the Road Back Plan that we were required to create as a school district, our Asbury Park School District Road Back Plan during COVID-19 is a requirement. There are two items here that had to be updated. One item that was updated in our Road Back Plan is Appendix Q. Appendix Q has been given to us from the Department of Education and it speaks very clearly and specifically to, regardless of having in-person instruction, there is an unconditional eligibility for our parents and families to have a full remote experience. So any parents and families that want full remote, Appendix Q speaks to that. There are very specific forms that parents can fill out to request that, but at no point in time is the option for full remote being taken from parents. And then the second piece is very heartwarming for me to share. I'm very delighted and pleased to have staff that are the boots-on-the-ground teachers, very concerned about and wanting to support their children that are the most vulnerable with in-class, in-person support. So I met with our Teachers Union President, our Executive Board member, Maureen Casey and John Knapp. And we have some teachers in the Asbury Park School District that are working with our most vulnerable students for whom they've not had in-person instruction or related services since the middle of March. And they made an appeal to me and asked me what would it take to be able to pilot having in-person instruction before our designated time. So I just want to shout out that Asbury Park School District teaching staff because they have really been driving that conversation along with our business office who has secured 1,500 desk barriers. We have masks, as you see, district masks, face shields, and all of the PPE that's necessary for us to begin a pilot. And so the Second Amendment to our Asbury Park School District Road Back Plan includes the in-person instruction pilot beginning on Monday for six classrooms. The six classrooms include one pre-K, special ed, and it will also include our very vulnerable special education populations. The parents of those students have been reached. We've had conversations, those teachers have reached out to them, they have had home visits. So it's just been a wonderful synergy in terms of the collaboration. in terms of the collaboration and communication between the parents, the students, and our staff. And I want to just applaud and commend our building leadership, Mrs. Jackson Byers and Mr. Perry Medina for being extremely supportive and, um, allowing the teachers to feel comfortable enough to want to, you know, provide these in-person experiences. So those are the two amendments to our plan. Very controlled, very, very deliberate and intentional setup. As we pilot, one of the things that we've done since I've been in the Asbury Park School District, well, are pilots. So this will definitely give us an opportunity to be informed in terms of what this looks like for our staff and students and our school community at large. And then, uh, the third comment I want to make is that our state monitor, Carol Morris, has been assigned additional responsibilities. And as a result, uh, she will be in the Asbury Park School District only three days a week as she has responsibilities to provide technical support in Atlantic City, which will have her in, um, there, out of our district for two days. Uh, so her days will fluctuate, but, um, just know that we will be having a reduced presence of our state monitor. And lastly, we see three out of four, if you look at your enrollment comparison, three out of four grades at the high school have increased. When we compare the enrollment data from last year this time to this year, this time we see a slight increase in, uh, the lower elementary and the upper elementary. We continue to lean toward and promote our online registration in an effort to increase our enrollment data. Madam President, that completes my superintendent's report.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Are there any questions?
I have, I have one quick question, Madam President.
Yes.
The, uh, in-person are talking at the high school.
Sorry, Ms. breaking up. Could you repeat that?
The in-person classes are just going to be at the high school, correct?
Actually, quite the contrary. There will not be any in-person instruction yet at the high school. We are piloting the in-person instruction in two of our buildings. One Bradley Elementary and the other one is at MLK Upper Elementary. Those are for very specific vulnerable populations for which teletherapy is not the easiest to provide for those students. We have to, um, also be mindful of those additional supports that OTPT kind of need to be in-person for. And our students have not had those supports since middle of March.
What are the hours?
The hours for our, um, in-person pilot are seven fifty-five to twelve thirty. Uh, we have students that will be, we have a mixture of students that will follow an A-B rotation in one of our classes, and in, in the other classes, they'll be Monday through Friday. They will have the grab-and-go lunch. They will, um, have transportation provided for them because those are populations that normally receive transportation. So we've worked out all of those logistics there. And we're just delighted and our families are overjoyed that their students will be able to have not only the academic and, um, uh, related services support, but also some interaction, which is much needed for these populations.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Zinski?
I have two questions. One is has to do with the, uh, comparison of enrollment. Do you feel that the lower grades were not getting the enrollment because of the virus impact? That's the first question.
We are looking at, we see, so correlation doesn't necessarily equal causation, although we have, uh, members of the team, Dr. Howard Morris's team, Debbie Sylvia's team, special ed, going out, making home visits. There is some thought around what you just said, but we don't have enough data that we've been able to collect just yet. But there is definitely a significant correlation between the pandemic and the survey and the students that we're not, uh, seeing in this space.
Uh, the second thing I wanted to mention, uh, maybe you might want to, one of our agenda items is the, uh, in-person instruction September twenty-eighth.
Yes, that's what I was sharing in my present, in my commentary. That's what we're talking about. When we talk about the most vulnerable populations, those are the students that will be coming for the in-person instruction. So it's not students, it's our most vulnerable students.
Okay, it wasn't, wasn't clear in the, uh, resolution, so I, I, that's why I asked. And I know that we were supposed to revisit, um, going back to in-person instruction for October. I don't know what thoughts or what, uh, the administration has decided about October instruction, in-person.
Right, so overall, in-person instruction, this is part of, um, this pilot is part of what we're going to use to begin to assess the, uh, our ability to expand our population in our brick-and-mortar setting for in-person instruction. We are poised and positioned nicely in that we've had an opportunity to see how things are playing out in other districts where there have been incidents, the responses, and how all of that looks. So, uh, we had, oh, we've opened in a remote setting. We understand now what it takes to deliver and provide instruction virtually and remotely for our students. Bringing them back in is something that we'll have to see, how that, how those interactions work, how the flow works, and that's what's the purpose of the pilot. Because this pilot will then inform, when October twentieth comes, will we be ready to expand it out across the district?
So I'm sure you've been looking at the charts and things that our deputy mayor has posted about how we continue to be flat, where other communities are having issues. And I think that's important to look into also.
Yes, I'm very familiar and very aware. I also get updates from our, um, Monmouth County Health Department as our deputy mayor does such a great job of updating that. She also has her disclaimer there that, you know, so we take, we get our data from the Monmouth County Health Department.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Madam Superintendent. Madam Vice President, Breach, I'm going to turn the media over to you for the committee reports, please.
Let me get this out. Hold on. Okay, um, I'm ready for my report, uh, so I'm going to do the athletics first. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, tonight was our first scrimmage, and I just got off the phone with Mr. Dovino. Um, the young men are doing well. It was a slow start, but it's the first time I've had any type of, uh, contact with any other team. Um, so they're doing okay. Um, if you saw the minutes that were put out, we have a very abbreviated fall sports schedule. Uh, the only middle school teams that are going to be competing is just, our first varsity, uh, football game is Saturday, October third. It's at Madison Square. Um, we have two home games this year, that's it, just two. We originally were going to, uh, honor the undefeated, uh, football team from eighty-five, but unfortunately, I spoke to Mr. Young and the team decided to wait until next year. Um, out of safety for everybody else, uh, they elected to, you know, just wait one more year. So the second game of the season, which will be second home game, is Friday, October thirtieth. That will be our seniors' night, where we recognize our seniors before the game. Our tickets are going to be minimum for our home games and away games. It's only five hundred tickets and a hundred tickets for our away team. So if you wanted to go to the away team, Mr. Dovino is going to work out uh, to distribute to any board members and, uh, other family members that might want to go to the game. Our soccer, our first boys' soccer game is October second. It's away, no, I'm sorry, it's at Asbury Park High School. So, um, second and third are going to be two very important games for our young men and women because it's the first time they're going to have any type of contact since, uh, last winter. So even though we're going to be very, um, strict with our, you know, entrance, if anybody wants to come, uh, please reach out to Mr. Dovino. We're going to have wristbands available, that's how we're going to be able to do the entry for everybody. Um, our Monmouth Ocean PAL, uh, they've been providing dinners, uh, Monday through Thursday nights. They're grabbing goes for our student athletes to come out after their practices. That's, that's a really good thing. Um, we're still working on the fall, I mean, the winter schedule. Um, everything's, of course, up in question until we see what happens. And we will reevaluate, um, in October. So everybody knows there's, unfortunately, there's no homecoming game this year, but we will still have and honor our seniors at that last home game. Um, if anybody has any questions, that's pretty much the nutshell. Um, our schedule is going to be posted on our committee meetings. And also, uh, Mr. Moore will have it out for any upcoming home games and away games for our teams. Yes, Ms.?
I want to ask, uh, was there any update on the, um, issue I brought up about contact tracing?
With the football, the sports teams?
Yeah, I had mentioned, uh, I wondered if, uh, there had been any information on contact tracing of people that are attending, especially if there's, uh, fans in the stadium or any sport that they come and watch. How are we or any district going to be able to notify individuals if they find out somebody has been infected with the virus and we have no information on how to contact people? That's what I brought up during the committee, and I didn't know whether you got any information from Mr. Dovino to follow up.
No, um, I have not. Uh, this is the first game we had today, so I'm going to try to, uh, meet with him tomorrow briefly to see how, uh, Red Bank's doing it. Because our, our scrimmage was away today at Red Bank. So I'm not sure what New Jersey, um, NJSA says to us. I will definitely follow up on that tomorrow because I have not gotten any word on that.
I was just wondering, uh, are we doing cheerleading, or did we have to suspend that?
We haven't got information on cheerleading. Um, that's, it's a good question.
Yeah.
We can answer that right now, but I will, I will definitely, if anyone else has any information, I don't know.
We are doing cheerleading and marching band.
Okay. Anybody else?
Did you hear? Howdy.
What's that?
Did you hear that?
Yeah. We are doing cheering, yeah. So, uh, Ms. Etienne, do you want to do a committee report on buildings and grounds?
Sure. Um, we have a, uh, uh, in, um, facilities request, AYS has paid their thousand-dollar fee. They've submitted all paperwork, um, so they don't need to request a waiver. Um, we have a building project at, um, Third and Marshall. There was a pipe bus on the second floor, we think, and it affected eight classrooms. Um, so you'll see a lot of furniture out back, all that had to be thrown away, and the water damage is getting remedied now. Um, we talked about central office relocation to the third floor of Barack Obama, Barack Obama Elementary School. Um, the building, uh, we're going to be doing a walkthrough. You know, there has been a walkthrough, uh, with an architect, um, to talk about what necessary renovations have to be done in the building. Um, the district received notification requests from College of Chief School to expand to the Salvation Army. Uh, the Department of Education, uh, has approved their requests, um, but for social distancing only for now. Um, the district, we also had a question about, um, we agreed for parking in front of Barack Obama Elementary School, not Barack Obama, Third and Marshall Elementary School, um, from six PM at night to six AM in the morning. Um, it was provisional, it was a, a condition that we made with the city. However, uh, proper signage was never, um, put there, so people are parking there even now when they're not supposed to be parking there during school hours. So Madam Superintendent says she would be reaching out to the city to, um, clarify, uh, that situation. Um, and, uh, we also talked about the fields being closed. Uh, we're going to be opening up a certain amount of the field so that they're, um, they're using them anyway, like, uh, Bradley School is being used. So we're going to be opening, um, some of the fields back up. And we also talked about, uh, trying to put, uh, basketball, um, rims back up behind the high school so that there's, um, opportunity for some activities. That's it for me. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Zinski?
I'm going to ask the same question I asked during the athletic, uh, presentation about contact tracing with AYF. Are you going to have, Stan, are we held liable? Or is that something the organization is responsible for?
I need clarification. I would believe it's the organization since they carry their own insurance.
Uh, Mr. Weiss, do you have a comment on that?
Sure. I didn't think you did.
I'm a little rusty.
So, uh, with regard to facilities use and, in particular, athletic facilities used by outside organizations, um, those organizations, uh, as a condition of being permitted to use the facilities are required to carry, um, insurance, uh, coverage that names the district as an additional insured. To the extent that the board is going to, um, during COVID, uh, lease out or rent out its facilities, it's probably a worthwhile, uh, investment to review those facilities agreements to see whether or not anything additional should be included in them to protect the district against, uh, any liability with regard to, uh, transmission of, uh, COVID. Uh, I will say that under Title Fifty-nine, which is the New Jersey Torque Claims Act, there are immunities for a school district or for a public entity, for that matter, uh, with regard to claims against the public entity for the transmission of communicable diseases. So that is out there, uh, as a defense. But again, that defense only materializes once a lawsuit is filed. Uh, so I would suggest that, uh, we take a look to the extent that the board intends to, uh, allow facilities use of, by outside organizations. My suggestion would be that we do a quick review of the current documentation, uh, to see whether or not they need to be updated to reflect the current state of affairs.
So, Mr. Weiss, you think that Mr. Hastings should update the facility use as far as when they put their application, or is it something we could, you know, do now, requirement? Because we're already practicing on the fields.
So, uh, if it's an outside organization, uh, and we're talking about those facilities use agreements, my suggestion would be that they be reviewed. Uh, when I say reviewed, I mean, the form of the agreement, the template, if you will, of the agreement, the terms of the agreement should be reviewed to see whether or not anything additional should be put in there, uh, with regard to new applications.
Yes, Ms. Zinski?
Then I would, I would ask the, uh, board attorney to review those and hold up on the, uh, the start of AYF until we have an answer, uh, as to our liability and whether we should update that.
Uh, Adam, you could certainly weigh in on this. The, most of the contacts that, uh, we've been working with through the SHURE Conference and also, uh, the State Athletic Association, which has, um, different phases for opening and steps that should be followed, are cautioning, uh, to an extent, not, you know, as far as, as a binding one. But they're cautioning about, I guess the best way to put it is to say that, you know, you become more subject to a liability since the more you take on as opposed to, uh, not doing that. For instance, the governor has said that five hundred people can attend to outside events. He has not required them to have any kind of testing, and he's not required them, you know, to have any kind of certification to either bringing it with them or doing it as they enter. Now, for us to impose that when it is not a requirement now puts a certain liability on, back on the district. And again, when I'm done, please correct me if I'm not stating... And again, when I'm done, please correct me if I'm not stating this right. Because you're now suggesting to people that you're doing the, I guess you could say, the sorting and, and tracing that's really going to be almost impossible to do. You've got people coming from the other school who may have tickets and who may not want to be tested. You've got all kinds of questions that are not going to be able to be answered legally at the gate. So some of these things are just a little above. You know, for instance, some schools are requiring temperature checks, others are not. There are many that are not. They want no part of it because they don't want the responsibility then for what has to happen after that. So I think we have to be a little cautious that we don't jump into some of these areas right now that are too big for us to handle, for one thing. And secondly, are not necessarily a requirement, but just the way somebody might personally feel about it.
Yeah, if, if I may, thank you, Ms. Morris. I want to clarify what I said earlier. I was only talking about third party outside organizations use of the school facility. I'm not talking about school sponsored events or NJSIAA governed events, nothing like that. I'm simply only talking about renting out space to outside organizations. And to be clear, I do agree with you in that to the extent we can and should, we should refrain from imposing any conditions on any outside organizations with regard to their use of our facility as it relates to COVID, contact tracing, things of that nature. Because the more we, it starts to look like we are controlling it, the more exposure to liability we may have. To be clear, my recommendation to review the documentation is only in the sense of reviewing the language in the documents to make sure that there are, you know, significant and sufficient waivers of responsibility from the district's end side. And the carrying or burdening the liability on the facility's user during this COVID time. Again, this all presupposes that the board is inclined to allow outside groups to use its facilities during COVID. I will say that based upon my, you know, experience in the state, not many, I can't think of any actually, school districts are making their facilities available to outside organizations during this time in view of the, the COVID concerns. But that's not to say the school district shouldn't. If it does want to do so, my only suggestion would be that I review the agreements to make sure that we're adequately protected as a district.
So Adam, you're saying as far as AYS, they're only using our outdoor facilities. You think that's still going to be a problem or are you referring just to indoor facilities or both?
Um, you know, I'm not going to be the one to say that it's a problem. I, I don't, you know, as I sit here right now, I, I don't know if it's a problem per se. It depends upon, you know, on what the board, you know, board's position is. Obviously, youth sports are very important, especially during these times where, where children are isolated. So there's a benefit to that and there's a community benefit to that, and I understand that. I don't want to weigh in as to whether or not facilities could or should be used. It's really a board decision and I'm, I'm not a board member. But I will say to the extent we're going to allow outside groups to use the, the facilities, we want to make sure that for documentary purposes and documentation purposes, we want to make sure that the district is adequately covered, given the current state of affairs.
Ms. Lozinski?
I understand Mrs. Morris' point about the governor's orders, but then again, our schools were the ones that were first to be opened. But restaurants have to document who enters their buildings. They have to take a name and the number in their party just to open a restaurant. But us as schools can invite districts, other districts from across the state of New Jersey to their.
I have the difference, Barbara, I have the differ with you right there.
Done.
I was at restaurants. I was at restaurants over the weekend and no one guessed for my name.
Can I finish? I'm just concerned allowing an outside organization and other organizations to come to our schools. My concern was if somebody is infected and they've come to the stadium or they're interacting with our children in a sporting event, how do we do what we have to do to make sure that those that have been in contact are going to be notified and do what we have to do? That's the issue and that's what I'm concerned about.
That's what the health department is doing.
Health department will.
When they, when they interview the person, they ask them what their activities have been and where have they been? And they have to, you know, mention every contact area. The only thing that you could think of is having benches and things like that. If it's outside marked where people should not sit, just to force spacing. But that's all you can do.
Who do we know who's here and who do they know who's here? We won't know. Not everybody's going to be counted. We don't. So that's my concern. I'm just raising concern that this scenario that could happen and the NJSIAA has not addressed this and outside facility use has not been addressed. And that's what I bring up.
All right, I could, I could talk to Mr. Javino. I'm not sure as far as what they're doing at Red Bank, but there's got to be some type of governance of what we're supposed to do. I mean, I don't know what we're supposed to do. We have two home games this year, football. I don't know what the other stadiums are doing. And as far as Mr. Weiss, what's our legal obligation as far as, you know, the contact tracing for people coming in and out of our stadiums? We're not even talking about indoor right now. We're talking about outdoor. So I mean, I don't know what our, what our, what our responsibility.
So with, with regard to school district sponsored sporting events, there are, there's guidance that's been put out by the NJSIAA and that guidance should be adhered to. With regard to whether or not we're going to allow spectators to the football games in particular, the school sponsored football games, that's a call for the school district to make. With regard to contact tracing efforts, again, that's a call that I would turn to NJSIAA and the Monmouth County Department of Health to give us guidance on. That's, you know, I'm going to leave that type of issue to the professionals and people that, that, you know, this is their, their kind of role and scope and function. So I'd have to defer to them as to, you know, what the rules quote unquote are and should be, both for players and for spectators.
All right, what I could say is I will talk to Mr. Javino and have him follow up with what the NJAA, what they want us to do as far as. I know for practice, they have to do temperature checks. I know they, before they even practice, they do that. I'm not sure exactly what they're recommending for our spectators coming in. I don't know. I will follow up with that. Anybody else have questions with that?
I would just ask that. By Mr. Weiss, of, of both the, the facilities documentation we do and the, the insured, I mean, I'm going back to the point of the insurance policy that if we're insure, as the outside entity gets insurance and they're insuring us or holding us harmless, that it includes health concerns.
I guess that'd be, Mr. Hastings, is it something we could add to the facility use or amend or?
So I have an email from Mr. Javino. As for NJSIAA at short conference, there's been no indication. They want schools to include contact tracing procedures during games or events.
Okay, that, that pretty much says it in a nutshell then, I guess. That we're not going to be wholly responsible for contact tracing and events.
But I don't know if that actually means that.
I don't either. I don't know who can answer.
Again, I think that, I would suggest that someone speak to NJSIAA directly to ask or re-ask the question. And the same thing for with regard to the Department of Health, just so that we have an understanding of kind of the lay of the land.
All right, I will, I will definitely reach out to Mr. Javino more and try to see what we can, what we can get for, you know, NJAA's, what, what our guidance should be with our, our games. I can't answer that right now, but I'll definitely look into it. And we also have any other questions, concerns with that? All right, Mr. Pickney's not here. Ms. Lozinski, do you want to do a policy? Or we didn't have a policy meeting this month. Do you want to talk about?
Well, we did have a policy meeting, but what it is, is just some various updates that has to be done because of the COVID updates. And there is something with the board and virtual meetings that we did discuss. So if you take a look at it, or it's just the first reading tonight, take a look at it. And if there's any comments, please forward them for next month.
Any questions for Ms. Lozinski? All right, Ms., Mr. Lotaraca, do you have a finance report?
Thank you. We received eight submissions on the Energy Savings Improvement Plan and solar energy. So those proposals will be under review. We're forming a committee to review that so far. Mr. Grillo and myself have offered to be on that. If anyone else would like to be on that mini group, please let Mr. Hastings know. We've talked about now evaluating Barack Obama as, how cost effective it will be in, in using as central office relocation. Going to look at that. And there was mention, I believe, we'll start on the 2022 budget in, in the upcoming weeks. And we're looking at a $5.6 million decrease in state funding under S2. So we have to look at potentially any projected enrollment increases, areas for potential cuts. We, we should look, look early and commit to what, what our tax, tax increase will, will be as a result. And that's it for finance. Questions?
Questions, anyone? Ms. Lozinski? No? All right, Ms. Lotaraca, that's, that's it. Ms. Jones, do you have anything to report?
Nothing at this time.
Nothing at this time? I guess that's the end of our committee reports. I'm sorry, you're right here. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Hello, everyone.
It's the masks. They're, they're, you can't tell.
Hello, everyone. All right, so we'll go over the curriculum. We're at number 10. We recommend the board to continue our, excuse me, our agreement with Empower Somerset in the Asbury Park School District. We have a three-year plan with the, with, with this program. We're on year three. The plan provides, the NJDOH provides up to $50,000 in funding for this program and we are responsible for $2,500 cost to go on of our counselors. This, this fund is paid out of a title fund as well, so just wanted to put that out there. And we've, we're on year three of this program. Next on the agenda here, we have recommending the board approves the Living Guest LLC, SCL program. Couple of things we come out of this, not only SCL, but also it's helping to, to, for, for planning grant for the SBHSN Student Services Grant. Also, we provide trauma-free training for our staff, which we had to stop at the end because of the pandemic in March, so we have to continue that. And so we're going to, that's what that's there for. Number, the next one, just skipping down to our Lake House Music Academy. We're going to be providing some, they're going to be providing some virtual tech tools for our students. And our Dream Academy, the programs include virtual performance groups in which students create performance materials using smartphone devices, applications that allow video and audio recording. So we have a very robust virtual component with Lake House, with the upper elementary and mostly with our high school students. Item number 13, recommend the early childhood department contract with Moleskine for per team member, preschool intervention and referral team person. So we're going to have someone that's going to come from the West to take on the responsibilities that are usually covered by a per team member in the district and that's going to receive an account and also not to receive any $1,000. This is of course savings for us because it's not someone we hire out. We're actually contracted. So there's no cost in the sense of having to provide benefits in the West. Yep, and that concludes my report. Other than we have one other item about our report card on number 19. Just wanted to point that out that we are in the process of, of creating, creating a new template for our report cards that match with the, um, there's the NCA standards. Our previous report card was aligned to the old standards and this one aligns more closely to what the new standards are. So just wanted to point that out there.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we have any programs that include parents, counseling when they have a child and they have difficulty getting counseling? Get the parents involved?
Yes, part of YNC program as well is parent driven as well. So part of the FCA council, excuse me, YNC counseling is parent driven. They must be a part of that counseling program and have to come in. We also obviously contact our parents and have them come in, whether they should be student, especially any student that has an ID, but even outside of that. We very strongly encourage our principals and our guidance councils and our teachers for that matter, to meet with parents on a regular basis. Oh, exactly, which is a vital part. Ms. Lozinski?
I have a question about. There isn't any indication about whether it's the classes, school based or how many days a week. Music instruction.
Lake House? Okay, yeah, how many days a week? Is that, is that what your question was?
Yeah, it doesn't indicate how many hours.
Yes. I can give that information to you, but I can tell you the amount of hours that we are, we are, they're providing services for. The performance groups are going to be 95 hours, 1.5 hour classes, 1.5 hours per class, depending on our scheduling. For the Dream Academy, it's a total of 80 hours. But I can give you a little closer breakdown. So let me send that to you. I'll send you a breakdown of how those hours play out over the course of the year.
You don't have to send it. I think it was just important because it wasn't mentioned here. You know, the contract is a large amount of money and I know you do a great job, but it doesn't really delineate what the purpose is.
Yeah, so this is, we cut, yeah, this is a fraction of what we have contracted with them in the past just so everybody knows. We actually cut this in half from last year because of where we are today, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Ma.
Anybody else have any other questions? Again, I apologize, Mr. Ruiz. I forgot your recording. I think that's the end of our committee report. Mr. Hastings, do you want to move on to the public participation in accordance with Board Policy 0167?
Yes, thank you. Pollers, we have about 14 folks on the line as attendees. They can hit star three if they'd like to ask a question. It'll queue up for us in a minute and we will. It'll queue up for us in a minute and we will, um, unmute them and as the caller is unmuted, they will hear on the phone that they've been unmuted and able to ask their question. Uh, there is also the comment section as well that we have that, uh, people can post a question. So we can give it a minute for that to, uh, for folks to have the opportunity and, uh, we'll move from there.
Do we have a first caller, Mr. Hastings?
We have no one.
Anyone? Anyone wanna call later? Questions? Anyone? There's nobody in the queue for the chat group either. And no one on the line?
No callers.
No callers? Okay. The time is, what time we have this rating?
8:33.
All right, 20:33, we will close the public participation, force to wrap the agenda and move on to the state monitor's report. Ms. Morse?
No.
There's no report for the state monitor.
Madam Vice President, I have a, uh, suggestion, if I may?
Sure, go ahead.
Can we separate number 14 from the, the, 13 and 14 from the, well, actually probably 14 from all the, uh, minutes, et cetera, that we're going to be accepting? So I have a couple of questions about 14.
You mean 14 in the agenda, superintendent's agenda?
No, the rest of the, the, uh, beginning agenda before the superintendents, we have minutes and then we have our calendar, district goals, et cetera.
Okay, the motion, number 14 on the motion, we could separate that out. Motion to approve the superintendent's miracles. Is that what you want to separate out?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. So, I, you know, I don't have any questions about the other items. So if we could separate out, so we can have a discussion because they were just submitted to the board, uh, late this afternoon. So I just had some questions.
Okay, Mr. Hastings, do you want to do a, uh, consent on through 13 and then separate 14? Have a motion?
Madam Vice, Madam Vice President, may I interject for a moment based, uh, on Lazinski's, uh, comment? They were under review from our executive county superintendent's office. So when I received them, I would, I've added them into our record.
Okay, do we want to separate that out and review it later?
Madam Vice President, I think right now we're looking for a motion on items 1, 10 to 13.
Move it.
Second.
By Mr. Lotaraca, second by Mr. Grillo. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne? Ms. Jones? Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Mr. Pinkney is not with us, I believe. Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. We now need a motion for item 14 and then we can take questions.
I'll move it.
Second. Questions? We have questions on item 14?
I believe Ms. Lazinski does.
Yes, I do. I wanted to, uh, ask, uh, a couple of questions because, um, you know, when I, I look at the district goals and I look at the miracles, of course, um, the miracles do reflect district goals. And I was looking through the, uh, goals and then I, most of them seem to, and correct me if I'm wrong, they seem to, uh, designate number two, which is community parental engagement. And I was wondering if, uh, or why some of the other district goals aren't included in the miracles.
I guess that would be up to Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, I didn't, um, there was a little noise on the line, so I didn't hear the last part of what you were asking.
My apologies, um, because of the feedback. Um, when I was looking through the miracles this afternoon, it appears that, um, at least, it looks like definitely two of them are for the district goals that has to do with community and parental involvement. Um, there's a couple of the quantitative goal that looks like they also apply to that. And I was wondering why more of, uh, the miracles, there may be, they weren't, some of the other, uh, district goals aren't incorporated in that. So that's my question.
Okay, so, and speaking, what happened? Oh, wow, I don't know what, I don't know what just happened. Give me one quick second. Okay, good. So, um, and conferring with the executive county superintendent and on the review of the goals, these are COVID-specific, COVID-related and a reflection of where we are right now in terms of needing to, uh, look at the new reality that we're faced with and put systems and protocols in place that are above and beyond what I would normally be doing and my scope as the superintendent. So yes, the district goals seem on, you know, the, you see some of this, uh, similar length, similar language in the district goals, but what's being proposed in the merit goals goes above and beyond what I would be doing normally. Yes.
Um, you know, I agree with that. I think that the fiscal accountability and developing the plan to re-put this, uh, Obama and necessary steps, I go to our help of this district as we move forward with, uh, buildings and grounds, also the, it's represented. There's a lot of feedback and I'm not sure where that's coming. That, you know, with the maintenance committee and buildings and grounds talking about a good move is to put the administrative offices in Obama, I think some of our, uh, goals are very important in regards to S2. And I was concerned, you know, if you said the county superintendent is more concerned with COVID, which is very important, we have another aspect of our district future that other districts don't have, that's not related to COVID. And I think maybe we might want to continue doing something in regards to that. That's what my concern was.
So districts, um, goal number four of our district goals is directly aligned to fiscal accountability and accountability and as well as the restructuring, reorganization directly tied to the S2 bill, which is why it's not reflected in my merit goals because I have to do that. That's not an above and beyond.
Any other questions concerning number 14? Can we have a motion to move number 14?
Move it. You, you already have one.
Thank you. Miss Lazinski and seconded by Ms. Breach. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Lazinski?
I'm gonna abstain. Not that I disagree with most of the, the miracles, I just concern that the other item wasn't, wasn't, uh, included.
Thank you, Ms. Breach.
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Ken?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, shall we move on to the superintendent's agenda? Any questions or concerns during with items one through, I have 16, is there more than that? Was there an addendum? Is that correct, Mr. Hastings?
Yes, give me, uh, one minute. We'll have the superintendent make her motion for a consent agenda.
I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President, I would like to make a recommendation for consent agenda for all items, including the addenda.
We have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second? Concerns?
Was there a second? I didn't hear one.
I did. I second it. Any questions, uh, superintendent's agenda? Mr. Hastings, a vote?
This is all B items. Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca? Mr. Saunders? All items carry.
Does there anything, uh, your agenda?
Madam President, may I, uh, make a suggestion if we could separate the AYF's facilities use until the, um, attorney has to review the use to see if it's, uh, complete?
That's like, Madam President, I don't know.
So let me clarify, the board, the AYF did not ask for any kind of waiver, so the board is not involved in voting use. So, um, we'll take it up with the attorney and Mr. Weiss can make a recommendation. Uh, but it has been reviewed by the Buildings and Grounds Committee and they were compliant with all the requirements that we have in place for, uh, for paying their fees, providing insurance and, uh, filling out the proper paperwork.
Understood.
If, if I, if I may just jump in, uh, to the extent I have a complete application, Mike, my suggestion would be that you vote on it, any complete applications. Uh, my review would be simply looking at documentation to see if the applications themselves or the forms themselves should be changed. But to the extent you have a complete application, um, I don't have any issue with it being voted on tonight. Uh, to the extent we need to amend, uh, the facilities use agreement, we can certainly do that down the road. But I don't want to hold up, uh, a program at this point.
The, as the group has made their payment and provided the proper paperwork, there is no vote on the use.
My mistake, Mr. Hastings. You're correct.
Thank you. Now I was just clarifying for Mr. Weiss.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Somebody laugh at something? I didn't know there was, uh, something that was funny.
So, could I get a motion for all items C1, number one to C5, number one? And we're excluding one C and D as those items were not provided. And those are the, uh, Board Secretary and School Money's reports.
Move it.
The second, please? Any questions or comments on those items? Shall I take the roll, Ms. Breach? Ms. Lazinski?
Ms. Lazinski? Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne? Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
Yes.
All items carry.
Do we have a motion to close the? Executive first.
I believe we need a motion to go into exec. Uh, that is on page C4. Madam Vice President, if you'd like to read that motion, I believe the item we're going in for is number eight.
Number eight. Okay. Now therefore resolve that the Asbury Park Board of Education will call to close executive session on this date, September 24th, 2020, at Asbury Park, New Jersey. For the purpose of outline as described below, upon return, action may be taken on personnel cards. We have a motion.
Move it.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, did Ms. Lazinski second? Was she the second?
Yes, I was. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grillo?
Yes.
Ms. Lazinski?
Yes.
Ms. Etienne?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lotaraca?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders? Okay, and Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Okay, I believe we're going into closed and.
Yeah, uh, if I can, just members of the public, the purpose of the closed session is to discuss personnel matters and to, for the board to receive attorney-client, uh, information and advice. Uh, it's anticipated that the closed session will last approximately 20 to 30 minutes, uh, after which, um, we will, uh, adjourn from executive session.
Okay, so we are adjourning the meeting from executive session, Mr. Weiss?
Uh, I'm sorry to clarify, we'll adjourn executive session, we'll come back into open, public session, uh, and take any action that may be needed at that time and then adjourn the meeting, uh, for the evening from public.
Okay. So for clarity, board members, you've received an invitation to a go-to. Uh, you'll have to, uh, log out of this meeting and log into that meeting. And then we'll return and any action that may be taken, uh, will proceed or will adjourn the meeting.
All right. So we have to log out and walk back in.
Unless you have a secondary device.
Yeah, I do, but there's no sound.
So we still have a vote, don't you?
Yes. Uh, now we've, we've taken this vote.
You already, we already voted to go on executive session.
Yes, thank you.
This is too complicated. I'm walking over.
So close. All right. Oh, yah, yah, yah. Leave this event and come back in.